Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you?
You done yet?
I used to move that they would take your time. You guys finish our rates for the playoffs.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the right where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had an executive session. We discussed mostly legal. We talked about the water bills. We talked about the pension and we talked about the injunction. Okay? Public comments on agenda items. Okay, we'll move on. Proven minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Question on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Registry of invoices, auto drafts.
Make a motion to approve the auto draft in the amount of $35,937.14.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Question on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
General funds.
Make a motion, we approve the general fund, $325,205.34.
Second motion. Properly moved in second. Any questions on a motion?
I have one question. There's a bill from the forensic auditing firm for $275, I guess. I didn't know if we had any movement on the forensic audit. Is that just a regular fee that we get charged?
That was one last bill from the end of the month. We had canceled that. It was just a carryover. There will be no more billing on that until we start. Thank you.
Any other questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Penvest.
Motion to approve in the amount of $1,459,362.93.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Redevelopment Authority Cooperation Agreement.
Counsel was presented with a cooperation agreement, I think, at the end of March. We've had a chance to review that. It's an annual agreement and we have to authorize it.
We need a motion on that.
Make a motion to approve the redevelopment authority cooperation agreement.
A second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions on a motion?
Yes, how long is this term? This agreement for?
It's an annual agreement.
One year.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Can we table this until we talk, since Sean is, what, on the board with Clearfield Redevelopment, just to ask some questions before we get into a year contract with redevelopment Authority?
We'll do that. Need a motion to table?
Yep. Give me a second.
You would need to make a motion to table this.
So I make a motion, we table the redevelopment authority agreement till we can discuss with Sean, you know, going forward, where we see this going.
Do we have any deadlines we have to meet for CDBG? That this would be affected by if we table it?
I don't think this would affect the CDBG.
This is just redevelopment.
Would it affect anything else?
Would it affect anything else? I'm not sure on our, I think this is how we pay under the redevelopment authority.
Pay.
We have, it's part of the agreement to pay for redevelopment authority director.
I would need a second on the table.
What? I'll second.
Properly moved in second. Question on that motion?
Just let me unmute it while we're down on the table. No questions on the table, just need a vote on the table.
Vote on the table.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Sean, you will look at that right away?
Yes, and we'll look at that right away and have a recommendation for next meeting.
Next meeting.
It's going to affect any of the things we talked about this morning?
So that the agreement's in there. It has investigation of grants and valuations and loans, preparation of grant applications and associated documents, administration of grant applications, preparation of project-specific requests for proposals, authority shall properly document payment requisitions, authority shall pay to the city, administration of program activities in preparing and submitting required program reports, ensuring contract compliance, collection and evaluation of program data, respond to the funding agencies' monitoring visits. So that, it's most of Joe's.
Job.
Grant administrative duties.
I think we need to move on that very quickly, like next meeting? Yes, okay. Request for funding from the Dubois Library.
Yes, this is a reoccurring topic. The library requested, I believe it was $49,000, I have that number specifically for matching grant. So this is that reoccurring request.
Okay.
Was tabled at the last meeting.
Recommendation?
I recommend that we do not approve that request based upon, in their application, they did indicate that they did have the money for that grant match.
Originally, when they decided to do it, they said they had the money to do it?
Correct.
Is that it? Is this something that involves a township also?
We did not receive a request. And typically, we would want those requests earlier in the year so we could budget for them. It's difficult to budget for something when you already passed the budget.
Yeah, same here. We need a motion on this?
Yeah, you might as well make it a, you could do a motion on it.
Somebody needs to motion either to approve the recommendation or reject the recommendation or do not take action on the recommendation.
I think the motion that we take Sean's recommendation to not match with the $50,000. To decline the request.
I'll second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions on a motion?
Yes, is there anything else that we would be able to do for any of that? Or you're just saying find out? No, or, because I know we pay so much every year. That's in the budget. So this is above and beyond, just to be clear or correct.
It is our building.
Yeah, I believe that maybe Chris can comment on this. I think we have $10,000 geared in addition.
We sit some with annual maintenance up there. And then we have the, I think it's $86,000 or $89,000 we provide to them. And then Kenny Carr from the parks does their maintenance up there.
And the township?
And we do have that in the budget.
Yeah, the township has a dedicated millage, about $55,000 per year for the library.
Yeah, the servant's clear on that. Servant that, you know, have funded the library.
From what I understand is.
Provide maintenance monies.
Yeah, yeah. And from what I understand is originally when they went for this grant, they said that they could do the match. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, correct. Any other questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Contract for Downtown Dubois Incorporated.
I believe you were given that again, second meeting in March for review.
Did you take a look at that? Did you see any suggestions I had?
The only thing, I revised the proposal into a contract. The direction that was needed was, I incorporated the numbers that were contained within the proposal. So council just needed to clarify what level of financing you were willing to provide.
And amount.
Correct.
And amount. Anybody have a motion on this? So it still has to be in the amount, is that correct? Yeah. So the motion be then for what amount? Right? Yes.
Originally, it was 20? 20 was the original.
I think there were multiple layers of funding.
I'll make a motion to approve the funding as requested, which I believe was $20,000 and $10,000, if they raise 10 to be matched, and then there's another 10 raised by different sources to be matched. So a total of $40,000.
Second. Properly moved in second. Question on a motion? I have one. My main concern is if they get accreditation. The way it helps the city and them the most is if they get the accreditation. And I think that would have to be spelled out in the contract, that that would have to be obtained before they get any more money. And I think $40,000, I think that's a little steep for City of Dubois right now, with the way the budget is. If it, this is something that came in after, after we'd already set our budget, it's a considerable amount.
I think the, you know, other people that want to support the downtown need to see that the city is on board as well. And once the, once the city supports them, they'll start to see the budget, it's open for a lot more support from the community and the business of the community. It's pretty common for cities to support their downtown groups, as we have seen the evidence presented to us. The benefits and the additional funding sources that we will be able to access through partnering with the downtown group will, I think, pretty much favor itself.
It should be an annual agreement thing going forward.
I would make no comment other than this.
This is in one year.
No, an annual be revisited at annual.
Yeah, if they want to come back next year.
Considering the way the budget is, I'd like to see that broke down into $20,000 this year and then $20,000 from like January to June next year. That would help our, that would help our budget and I think that would.
I think it's one.
You guys, because I think somebody mentioned that to us. Steve?
I think we're guaranteeing 20. If they raise 10, they get another 10. So we're only, we're only guaranteeing 20. They still have to raise more.
What's the other?
If they raise 10.
So you're saying, you're saying give them 20 and then give them another 10 that they match?
No, their proposal was, can you elaborate?
The proposal was $20,000 to help cover operating costs for this year, 2024. Then $10,000 match only if we raise $10,000 in corporate sponsorships.
Okay.
So that would be on us to raise 10,000. And then the other 10,000 was based through the redevelopment authority to, specifically to increase facade grant funding. We already do 50 a year and we use that every year. And this was for side projects, things that might not happen.
Well, being on redevelopment for, there are some things that are good for the city and good for the downtown, but couldn't be funded by those.
We already use our 50 every year that we get from DCEB. And there are things that don't meet.
That don't meet, yes.
So maybe that last 10 needs to be approved by redevelopment authority and not the city? And they can be on the hook for that 10?
I'm good with that. See what they think.
So at this point, then, we're just making a motion for $20,000.
Plus $10,000.
Plus $10,000 match.
Yes.
And then the match.
Yes.
I would accept that offer as well, if you want to rewrite the contract for us to approve. But if, if the only thing you're pulling out is the redevelopment authority, we can go to the redevelopment authority ourselves and ask for that additional $10,000, if that's okay with you.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I'd like to see only 20 of that given out in this budget year.
You're asking for, so then only 10 and 10 or 15 and 5?
I think what he's saying is 20.
That's what he's asking. He wants you to give 20 this year.
And then if you do, if you do raise the 10.
I think we'll give you 20 and if you do raise the other 10, we'll give you the other 10, but probably not till next budget year.
Till 2025.
We have a very tight budget this year.
Yes.
And this came in after, this came in after we had our budget already done.
Yeah, I understand that. Okay, so then that would not affect us coming back in, say, October, November to look for something to be added to next year's budget? You're just saying that that extra 10 would be after the first of the year?
Yes, but be aware, you need to get accreditation.
I understand that. And, yes.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to $20,000, $10,000 matching, if $10,000 raised, to be paid after the first of the year.
Second. Properly moved in seconds. Any questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Appointment of municipal solicitor.
Chris, we received two solicitations for solicitor. We received Tom Breth's firm and also another firm out of Pittsburgh. After review, our recommendation is to maintain Tom Breth as solicitor for the City of Dubois.
I'll make that motion. Are we, just to clarify, is this for the whole year? Are we just saying if we're doing with consolidation, how do we want to handle that?
I serve the pleasure of council, so it's a day-to-day.
No contract. Particularly if you reappoint, have to get your reorganization.
I think we thought about the 10-member board and we'd go back to each solicitor to handle what we needed to. Correct. I think I've made it clear to the council that I'm here to assist the city in the short term to deal with the issues that are before the city. In the short term, with the understanding there's going to be consolidation. I'm happy to continue to work with the city if it's the desire of council up to consolidation. But I do not, with all due respect to everybody, we love the people we're working with. The firm is greatly appreciative of the opportunity to assist you, but this isn't a long-term gig for me. With all due respect, I'm about an hour and a half a day and I'm getting old.
Okay, I'll make the appointment. For Dylan McCandless is solicitor.
Second. Properly moved in second. Any questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Absolutely. Recommendation to award bids.
Okay, the first one is recommendation to award architectural services for the municipal building in addition to KTH Architects. This was approved by the joint board at our last meeting, so a recommendation is to mirror that recommendation. The reason that city council has to approve this individually is the contract with DCEB is specific to the City of Dubois and DCEB.
Motion? Council wishes?
I make the motion, we award KTH Architectural Services for the municipal building.
Second? Second. Properly moved in second. Questions on a motion?
Do you have a, do you have a written contract?
We have a written contract?
We don't. We have a proposal, but we don't have a written contract. I would suggest you add subject to this solicitor's approval of the final written contract.
What? Want to add that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Abstain, my wife works at KTH.
Reesinger.
I'm going to abstain, I have a good friend that's a principal there. 2024 chemicals. We have to do these separately.
Yes.
Yeah, number one.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Chris today.
So we received our bids last Thursday for the chemicals. The first one is 130 50-pound bags of sodium fluoride for the water department. That cost $92.46 per bag to Univar USA.
Does that include shipping?
Delivery.
It's delivered, yep.
Let me add, what do you see in price-wise from last year and this year, Chris? Just in general for all.
This one was a little bit lower.
Oh yeah? So it's not, not as much?
Most of them were right in the same ballpark, a little bit up, a little bit down, nothing changes here.
That's good, just. All right. I'll make a motion, we approve number one, the bags of sodium fluoride awarded to Univar USA in an amount of $92.46 a bag.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Number two?
Number two is 35,000 or 3,500 50-pound bags of light soda ash for the water plant at $17.31 per bag. Recommend to Univar USA.
Make a motion to approve 3,500 50-pound bags of light soda ash from Univar.
Second. Properly moved in second. Any questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Number three?
13 2,000-pound cylinders, liquid gas chlorine delivered to the water plant at $2,357 per cylinder to Univar USA. Motion to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any question on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Number four?
16 2,000-pound cylinder liquid gas chlorine delivered to the sewer plant, $2,357 per cylinder to Univar USA.
Motion to approve.
Second. Properly moved in second. Any question on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Number five?
Five 275-gallon IVC liquid per manganese. It's, they come in totes, $2,743.14 per tote. That's to treat the manganese at the water plant to Shannon Chemical.
Motion to approve.
Second. Properly moved in second. Any question on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Number six?
Approximately 1,000 gallons per month sodium bisulfite solution liquid for the sewer plant at $3.18.15 per gallon to Barber's Chemical.
How much does that vary? Does it approximate?
How much, does it vary the cost or how many gallons from a? You know, it's chlorination, dechlorination. I can't imagine it varies that much, but I don't know that off the top of my head, Shane. Sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second. Properly moved in second. Any questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Number seven?
Five 55-gallon drum heavy-duty degreaser, $552.86 per drum to clear field of oil.
Question to approve?
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any question on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Number 11, recommendations to approve to award bids.
Yep, 2024 pavement markings. We have a bid opening on Thursday as well. The bids were higher than expected. Going to work with Matt Cook to see if we can get a revised project put together that we can fit within our budget. So the recommendation is to reject all bids.
Were we working with Sandy Township on that?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah, sorry. Did that bid, that bid includes Dubois and Sandy?
It did include both of them, correct. Yep.
I make the motion that we reject the 2024 pavement markings.
Second. Properly moved in second. Any questions on a motion? I asked a question. It's just for council. You could comment at the end.
Okay.
Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Recommend award of garage boiler replacement.
Yeah, the boiler at the city garage on Parkway Drive went out here this winter. We received proposals on that and recommend awarding a replacement of the garage boiler to Epic Heating and Cooling in an amount of $19,495.
Motion to approve. Second. Properly moved in second. Second. Properly moving second. Any questions on the motion?
How soon are we going to do that? Like, does that have to be done right away?
Yes.
That does? Okay.
Temporary heaters down there regularly.
Oh.
Oh. Any other questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Cat control.
The proposals were due on April 19th. The only proposal we received was Perfect Pause. So we would recommend awarding that contract to Perfect Pause for 2024.
I make that motion. We award the contract for cat control to Perfect Pause.
Second.
Properly moving second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
I'm going to abstain because my wife Patty is the director. Union Township Municipal Authority Water Agreement.
Yep, they purchase water from the city of DuBois. We have a calculation that is run every year to calculate the rate. There was just a couple wording that we wanted to get consistent in there. We've been using the same calculation for years, and this is going to just document, memorialize those calculations. There's no change in the calculation at all.
Make a motion to approve the, I guess we'll call it revised, the new township Municipal Authority Water Agreement.
Second.
Properly moving second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Request from Goodwill Host Company, number five, to close South State Street from Rumbarger Avenue to Spring Avenue.
This is an annual request for their fireman's week. They have it broken down into two different times. On the 17th through the 21st, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. And then on the 22nd, from noon to 11:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Second. Properly moving second. Any questions on the motion?
I'm just wondering on the second night, if there was a noise complaint from the neighbors, would they be amendable to the 10 o'clock? I mean, do neighbors complain because of noise?
I don't recall having complaints in that neighborhood from this event before.
Okay. I'm fine with it.
Okay. Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Recommendation from Watership Committee to sell D-tagged permits for deer hunting in 2024.
Yep, another recommendation from our forester. We've done this the past few years. It's essentially extra tags to control the deer population specifically where we're trying to regenerate forest regrowth.
Make a motion. We take the recommendation of the Watership Committee to sell D-MAP tag permits for deer hunting in 2024.
Second.
Properly moving second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Public comments?
Yeah, I'm about to line thing. I'm Matt White. I own an asset in here. Why were, why were the bids rejected, I guess, your question?
Price higher than, than we had a budget for.
And that was, well, if you have to prioritize, is there budgetary constraint? Is that a problem?
I think we're going to take a look at both programs for Sandy and DuBois and rebid it out.
So I might make some adjustments. If you would, you might think of the safety, the ones that you want high visibility, like school crosswalks or high traffic like the Boulevard or something like that. Prioritize those. And the high-ticket items are rover crossings, very expensive, other labeling like that. Whereas line, unit line pricing for double yellow lines or anything like that is virtually inexpensive. Arrows and things like that are expensive, and some of them are very visible as it is, may not meet reflectivity standards, but are very visible and lit. So you can consider all that. And if you need help, we're available. I appreciate the help.
Thank you. So Joe Mitchell and I drove around the city, and we looked at ours, the exact same points you were talking about.
Okay.
And I've had that with Matt Cook from Sandy Township or Wednesday in New York. The exact same. Ideally, we'd like to paint them all, but there are prioritized ones that we have to pick and after. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other, any other public comments? Yeah!
Shirley DeRouge, Main Street, Downtown DuBois. Thank you, Mayor and Council for tonight. I also want to thank Chris Nussudi for the last several months, working so well with him as the acting city manager. I also want to thank him and Ken Carr for all their help this past weekend with our annual spring cleanup. That was a wonderful event, and appreciate all the help that you've extended throughout all of this. Also, I want to say thank you to our beautification committee, those that have donated, and all the participants. We have a wonderful turnout in our downtown office and surrounding area. It's looking very nice, very clean, and it's great timing because we have Main Street America coming in this Wednesday. You have been invited. You've received. They will be here in council chambers when, starting Wednesday morning. I will be here for the day. They are going to be out and about at certain points also throughout the day, visiting a few of our local businesses as well. So I hope as many of Mayor, Council, and city leaders can attend. And just also our flower pots, I just want to put this out there to everybody. We have been taking sponsors, sponsorships for them, and we've had a great response to that as well. Those are due coming up here May 1st. They will be for our flower pots now, Down to Earth Gardening Club. They do a fantastic job. They maintain out here the city building, Pershing Lot, the library. They maintain their, but we will be maintaining the larger ones dispersed all throughout the downtown as well. And then we have our chocolate festival coming up, which we can probably show you closing. And just look forward, Sean, to working with you, and thank you again.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sure, go ahead, Chief.
All right, Leo Brooks, the Fire Chief. I know last month I decided we just wanted to come and give like a monthly fire department report, piece report. Fire department's been very busy since I've been here last, as far as calls, community stuff. We did all our church wash down before Easter. We actually did the downtown wash down last night, where we cleaned all the winter debris from downtown, so just to help out the businesses and everything. And also, it's a great training opportunity for our young guys, the nozzle and stuff like that, hooking the hydrants and stuff like that. So, so we've been very busy. We're doing a mock crash at the high school on May 16th. I mean, that's pretty, the Township Fire Department as well with that also. Do sand, the police, Mr. Veronica Funeral Home and Coroner, I think comes to. We try to make it as realistic as possible for the kids, deter them from driving impaired and prom. So that's coming up on May 16th. We'll be doing that. We have a couple fundraisers still going on. Volunteers has their Fireman's Platter. If you haven't got tickets for that, see one of those guys or myself. I can get you tickets for that. And Fourth Ward has their chicken barbecue Mother's Day, correct? Yeah, it's 11:00 a.m. That sells quick, so you want to get there early as possible. That's May 16th, May 12th, I'm sorry. Then I want to thank everybody for Third Ward's meatloaf dinner. We sold out in one hour. It was unbelievable. So we want to thank everybody for that. As quick as we've ever sold out, and it was close to 250 meatloaf dinners in an hour. So that's amazing. And I want to recognize next weekend, we have MOD 4 for our fire school. The fire school's broken down into four different mods. Young people are, they're going to be doing their final testing, so they're interior guys. So they'll take a written test, and they'll actually go in, do a practical fire where they actually put out live fire for fire school. These folks deserve a lot of credit. 200 hours of training just to volunteer to serve the community is, is very impressive, especially for young people. They could be doing a lot of other things, but they dedicate themselves to that. So I know some guys that are low order, they're in a class of, you know, families. So they deserve, they're a lot of credit. That's next weekend. And if you have Facebook, check out our Facebook page. We started a thing, Meet Your Firefighter thing. It's, I think we have four of them up here now. Just check it out. We're trying to get the, the community, the, you know, to get to know our firefighters a little better, so that's, we rolled that out. There's going to be some other stuff we're looking into, just to be more recognizable in the community to everybody. So, and that's what's going on in the fire department. I mean, we're very busy.
Thank you.
Stand up, state your name.
My name's Mark Rollash. I've been downtown resident for twenty-some years now. And I'm not here on happy terms. I'm here to discuss police misconduct. And even though I've brought, brought it up different times, tried talking to our former chief, phone calls were unanswered, messages left, never returned, never given. Even when I got my right to know request for my phone calls to the station asking for those requests, strangely enough, the chief's request calls were not listed. So therefore, in my opinion, it didn't happen. But why I'm here for, and maybe you can help me out, can you tell me the police standard operating procedures? Where does it deal with how to handle a victim of rape? We have operating procedures to handle all that. Okay, sir. I have evidence.
Yeah, you have to talk to the board here. We can't have conversations among.
I have, I have evidence of a woman who was a victim of rape, who was in a conversation with one of our police officers. And after basically getting up enough confidence and ability to discuss the matter that she was trying to discuss, she reveals her attacker, and the officer says, "I don't care." Then shortly afterwards, he says, "I'm done dealing with you." Now, I don't know what anybody here wants to say. I can give you his name. I have audio of it. It's going to go to the news. I don't know how you want to deal with this, but I think that he should be pretty much given the opportunity to resign. I don't, I don't think we, he deserves to be terminated. I think that's too honorable.
Sir, I will deal with it as, before you leave this evening, I'll give you my business card that'll include my cell phone number and my email address. You can communicate directly with me. I'll share the information with the city manager and city council.
I did talk to Chris at one time. He was made aware of this. And I did talk to different members. I'm not going to say who they were at City Council. People were made aware of this.
I'm not, and I'm not disputing anything you're saying. I'm telling you, from this point forward, I'll give you my business card this evening. You can send me an email with whatever you have. It'll have my cell phone number. You're free to contact me. I will communicate back with you regarding this matter. You won't be here next week saying nobody's getting back to me, because I personally will get back to you regarding it. It's a very serious allegation. City Council takes it very seriously, and now that you've brought it to their attention directly, I'll respond to you immediately. Why don't you share that information?
Would you want a second allegation? I have more.
I want whatever information you want to provide me.
You have six officers with video evidence that pretty much, we have a problem in the city, and I'm looking for accountability. The phone lines in this city building are not reported. We do not have body cams. We do not have car cams. Can somebody on the board tell me, when did we get the grant for our body cams?
But, sir, I can tell you, this isn't, this is a comment period. This isn't a question and answer time. It's not your opportunity to cross-examine City Council. City Council didn't know, as far as I know, that you were coming this evening or what you were speaking about this evening. So they're not prepared to give you answers, nor is this the correct forum for this type of information to be exchanged. I can tell you, any information that you want to pass on to me, you can send to me via email. You can send me text messages. I prefer emails. You can send me text messages, and that's my sole phone. So I'm giving my, my personal as well as my work cell phone number, and you're free to contact me. I will communicate with you regarding this matter. I will share whatever you send to me with City Council. City Council will evaluate it and make a determination what, if any, action needs to be taken, including potentially referring this to the district attorney's office and/or the attorney general's office. So I don't want to cut you short tonight, but this really isn't the forum for there to be a back and forth regarding the allegations.
From April of last year, I've been trying to get a hold of people in the city building. Nothing happened. When I got new counsel and was able to talk to Chris, I did get some leeway, and I was able to get information. I had an interview with the same officer, and then I get a copy of that through requesting it. It was edited. What did he cut out?
We'll see, sir, this.
And I understand your point of view because you're, I'm coming at you, blindsiding you. But yet, at the same time, how do you think the victim feels?
Okay. Well, I can't change anything that occurred in the past. I can't intelligently discuss what, whether what you're saying is accurate or not.
You want to hear the audio? I'll let it for you.
Well, here's what I'm telling you. I'm telling you, I'm going to give you my contact information. I'm asking you to share anything you want to share with me.
Anybody in the room want to hear it? Go play it.
That's not the purpose of this meeting, sir. Okay? The purpose of this meeting is to provide you an opportunity to make comments, which you have done. We respond to that comment. I've personally given you my assurance as the Solicitor, that I will communicate with you regarding your concerns and respond to whatever information you want to provide me. That I'll share that information with City Council, and that City Council will give me direction on how to proceed, including potentially conducting an internal investigation, referring the matter to the district attorney's office, referring the matter to the attorney general's office.
District attorney's office didn't return any phone calls.
Sir, I can't, I can't fix what's gone in the past. Tonight's the first time I'm hearing this. I'm telling you, you come next week or next meeting, you can tell me whether I followed through on what I just told you.
Depending on work schedule. That's why it took me so long to get here.
If it's not next meeting, you can come back whenever you want to come back, and we can have a conversation as to whether I followed through with what I told you tonight.
Okay. Fair enough on that, and I'll take that easy, sir.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Yes. I'll speak to you before, before you leave this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Comments from council members? Jim?
Oh, good, thank you.
I just wanted to thank the fire department, because as a business owner downtown, and I'm a little particular about my, my property's look. I love clean streets, so I thank them, and I watch them out my window do it, so it was nice to see them, and I appreciate it. And thanks, Chris. It's been great working with you. I know it's, it's been a good four months. And welcome aboard, Sean.
Welcome aboard, sir.
I just want to thank the city staff and City Council for the warm welcome, and I'll look forward to working here. And I just want to re, just to thank the DuBois City Police. We had a pretty major event in Sandy Township that they were instrumental in helping and assisting us with. So thanks again for all your help.
Welcome, Sean. Look forward to working with you. Chris, can't thank you enough. Great job. You got thrown into an impossible situation and did the best anybody could have done. So we really appreciate all your time and effort to keep the city on the rails for as long as you did. So look forward to continuing and working with you as engineer and as we move towards consolidation, but good job and much appreciated.
I wanted to thank everyone that donated their time and energy to the spring cleanup and the street wash down, the sidewalks and the streets. It's pretty good. Thank you.
Chris, thanks. Very helpful to be with you, Chris. Well, good luck. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Properly moving second. Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
No.
Reesinger.
Yes.